Welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 3. Ms. Hilbrick, will you please re-roll?
Councilman Dela Garza.
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tim Solis.
Here.
Councilman Crocker.
Here.
Councilman Young.
Here.
Councilman Loughran.
Here.
Mayor Bocknight.
Here.
And Councilwoman Scott will not be in attendance.
And if y'all will please stand for the pledges followed by a moment of silence. Our Father.
Oh, sorry. You made it. (laughter). Excuse me. I pledge a re-plead. To the God who takes America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. All right, I'm glad I could wake everybody up with a laugh. We're going to go into announcements and reminders. We're going to start with administration of oath for Ms. Allison Lacy as our new city attorney.
Administering oath. All right, I was just going to simply say that administering the oath is our city secretary, April Hilbrick.
Go raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
(laughter).
I state your name.
I, Allison Lacy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of city attorney for the city of Victoria.
Of the office of city attorney for the city of Victoria.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause). Mr. Garza, if it's all right, if I start with announcements and reminders.
Please.
So I wanted to let everybody know that our former city manager, Mr. Denny Arnold, passed away this week. So please keep him and your thoughts and prayers and his family. He was hired on January 1, 1978, as our assistant city manager. He was promoted to city manager in October of 1994, and he retired in September of 2006. So he was 12 years as our city manager. We thank him and for his service and keep his family and your thoughts and prayers as well. Also, reminder that the election for city charter, city council, and there's a couple of state items on the ballot, is Saturday, May 7. All polling locations should be open. And today was the end of early voting. So, on to you, Mr. Garza.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. They upgraded my mic. It has a button now. So it threw me off a little earlier. But at least, the mayor, at least you won up my little screw-up. But in any case, we do have a couple of staff announcements. I want to ask Dana to come up and provide an update on our library strategic plan.
Good evening, council. So in May, we are moving towards the community input part of the library strategic plan. And so during May, we're going to have two events that are occurring that I wanted to make sure you were aware of and the public were aware of. Our consultant, Maureen Arnt, is coming in next Monday and Tuesday, May 9 and 10, and will be leading four community focus group meetings. And these are open to anyone who wants to attend. We are asking that they register so that we kind of know how many people for seating and food. And I wanted to just give you those dates. So the first one is on May 9 from 11:30 in the morning till 1:00, and it's in the Bronte Room of the library. And then that evening, at 5:30 to 6:30, we're having a meeting at Vickers Elementary School Library. May 10, we're having an event from 4:30 to 5:30 at the Bronte Room of the library, and it's also during a children's Lego event. So parents can attend and their children can attend the Lego event at the same time. So we are definitely encouraging parents to attend that one as well as the general public. And then on May 10, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., we're having another meeting at Meals on Wheels on Murray Street. Each participant will need to bring in their phone or another mobile device if they wish to participate in the polls that go on during the meeting. So we're just encouraging people to bring their phones with them. The other thing that happened today is we opened the survey. We're having a library survey that's going to run from today until June 3. It's available through the library's website. So if you go to the library's website, a pop-up will occur, and you can just go straight to the survey from there. Or it is available through our meeting room calendar, so you can find it there as well. If you're having any trouble finding it, call us, 485-3301, for the library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. I do want to also ask Tiffany to come up and provide an update on car seat program.
Good evening. So the municipal court, police department, and fire department will be hosting a car seat fit event, a car seat inspection event, on Thursday, May 19, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. We are accepting appointments for this, and people can contact the municipal court at I do also have some flyers here in front of the podium that you can pick up as well if you would like that information. But that will be on Thursday, May 19, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. People can bring their children with the car seats to get those inspected for free during that event by city employees. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Those are all the announcements we have.
Okay. We will go to item B2, Public and Employee Recognitions, a couple of proclamations, and beautification award.
Okay. So item B2A is the Public Service Recognition Week proclamation. Whereas the people of the city of Victoria have served every single day by public servants at every level in the executive, legislative, and judicial branches of government, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our community working. And whereas public employees take not only jobs but oaths to perform their jobs to the best of their ability, and whereas public servants, including military, reserve personnel, police officers, firefighters, correction officers, doctors, nurses, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day to serve the people of the city of Victoria. And whereas public servants, including teachers, social workers, administrators, computer technicians, laborers, and countless others' occupations, day in and day out, provide with efficiency and integrity the diverse services demanded of the government by the people of the city of Victoria. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. And now therefore, I, Jeff Bocknight, mayor of the city of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2 through 6, 2022, as Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens of the city of Victoria encourage to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of all the hard-working and deserving public employees of the city of Victoria, Texas.
Mayor, I simply wanted to take a quick second and thank all of our employees for their public service. Our mission at the city of Victoria is to enhance livability, and we recognize as the executive leadership team that we cannot do that without our employees. And so we hope that through the course of this week, and really throughout the year, we do the best we can to show our appreciation for our employees. This week will mark the first formal week that we recognize this week within our organization, and we've got several neat things going on internally to hopefully show our appreciation to our employees. For those employees that might be tuning in, we ask to not forget to show their Star Wars gear tomorrow for May the 4th. So May the 4th be with you for our city employees, and we'll see them tomorrow, and we'll see them at our appreciation luncheon on Thursday as well. Thank you so much for the recognition.
Item B2B is Arson Awareness Week proclamation. Whereas the theme for the 2022 Arson Awareness Week, arson in homeless communities, engagement, education, and outreach. And whereas according to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, in January of 2021, more than 326,000 people were experiencing sheltered homelessness. And whereas according to the U.S. Fire Administration, 492,500 outside fires per year have been reported, with 20% of the fires reported as intentional or arson. And whereas according to the National Fire Protection Association reports, fires in homeless communities are a result of improper or illegal use of open fires for the purpose of smoking and heating, which often lead to exposure fires and personal injuries. And whereas we will use the week of May 1 through 7 to focus on the importance of a cooperative effort with the fire and emergency services departments, law enforcement, public works, and insurance companies, and the justice system to help prevent the horrendous crime of arson at homeless communities. Now therefore, I, Jeff Bocknight, mayor of the city of Victoria, Texas, do officially declare the week of May 1 through 7, 2022, to be Arson Awareness Week in Victoria, Texas, and pay special tribute to all the fire and law enforcement investigator agencies for their dedicated and tireless service.
Just real quick, I want to thank mayor for the proclamation and bring recognition to Arson Awareness Week, and our fire arson inspector investigators work tremendously hard to investigate and prosecute those cases, so thank you very much.
Next, we want to ask Kristi Eucker to come up and help present our May 2022 Keep Victoria Beautiful Business Beautification Award of the Month.
Good evening, mayor and council. Glad to be here today. Before I present our May Business Beautification Award, I wanted to give a quick update on our very successful Earth Day cleanup. We had 230 volunteers. We cleaned up 15 locations this time, which was more than we've ever cleaned up before. We had seven on Loop 463, and then we had them all over town. And we cleaned up 139 bags was the official count. We do that with text dot. We also picked up quite a bit of large debris, tarps, tires, pallets, that sort of thing. I want to recognize the most trash picked up, this was a big deal, was team number five, Rick Madrid. His team picked up 18 bags, seven volunteers, between Stockdale and Salem. And I think he's still here. Shout out to Rick. (applause). He's also one of our-
Did they win a pizza party or something?
They win a clap. And a certificate, and, you know, a hug. He's also one of our KVB board members, and I always appreciate his help at all of our cleanups. The most unusual item was picked up by the Colony Creek Neighborhood Association. It was a boxing glove, actually led by Mandy Lingle, her team. That was pretty cool. Never seen a boxing glove picked up. Lots of weird things, though. I had lots of great submissions. I want to also thank Mayor Bocknight for being there to welcome everybody that morning. That meant a lot. And to Councilman Crocker for being there, bringing a team, and he brought his whole family. So they cleaned up quite a bit that morning. They earned their food. I also want to thank the Salvation Army, Chick-fil-A, and Del Pappa Distributing for keeping everyone fed and hydrated. The Victoria Television Group, they support us quite a bit in this, doing a lot of promotion, and they also brought a team out. But especially thank you to everyone who could have slept in that day but instead showed up to clean up some trash and do something good for Victoria. The next citywide roadside cleanup is the Fall Sweep on September 24. But any group can clean up anytime. Let me know. I'll get you a spot and get you set up. It's our Clean Sweep program, so we don't stop people from cleaning up. You don't have to wait for September 24. Okay, on to our beautification award winner for May, which I'm actually presenting today. Our May Business Beautification Award goes to Santa Rita Market, located at 107 West Santa Rosa, here downtown. This business has actually been nominated several times for their eye-catching storefront. And owner Kristin Ortiz says that since she first saw the forens sign at the downtown property, she knew this was the place for her retail shop of her eclectic handmade treasures from all over Latin America. She said it had to be attractive and eye-catching for people to notice the little shop off the beaten path, and she has put much effort into the hanging baskets and the painted bench and window done by artist Kirby Edwards. Kristin says that the key to the success of her business has been her partnerships with other women and connecting with the local community. By the way, if you haven't heard, they're hosting a guac party for Cinco de Mayo in partnership with the Main Street Program. So along with the Parks and Rec Street Dance, they'll be having something downtown, too. It is clear that her attention to detail has not only been good for her business but for the area in general. Her beautiful storefront is a perfect example of how small businesses can make a big impact on keeping Victoria beautiful. So I'd love to recognize Kristin Ortiz.
We can clap.
Good evening. I'd like to say that I'm really humbled by this award, and it's just not for me. It's probably for all the women who are inside of Santa Rita Market. We work really hard to bring something special to our community, but it is an honor to be able to have Victoria as a community and have the outpour of love that we've received from this fabulous town. So thank you.
Thanks, Kristin.
Anything else, mister?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay. Items from council, we have one listed from Dr. Young, demolition of historic structures. We'll go through that first before we take any other items.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. As I talked about last time, our history is something to be celebrated, and part of that is our historic homes and buildings. They enhance our historic tourism and our overall pride in our beautiful and historic city. There has been a couple that have come down or in the process of coming down recently, and I've had some questions from citizens, and so we brought this forward, just to ask Julie to go through the process, but then also find out what can be done for preservation and what's the city's role in that.
Good evening. So I have a quick chart for y'all to just, for reference. This is from the Texas Historic Commission. I thought it would be fitting to start with what is a historic property or historic building? So these are the different categories that the Texas Historic Commission outlines. State antiquities landmarks are generally owned by the state, so think of like the Alamo. Then we have National Register of Historic Places and Recorded Texas Historic Landmark Properties, and those are the two that you'll find here in Victoria. And then the other designations aren't actually structures with our educational subject markers and historic Texas cemeteries. So as you'll see, the protection category prevents demolition of historic property, and neither the National Register of Historic Places or the Recorded Texas Historic Landmark Programs protects properties from being demolished if they have those designations. And then on the bottom, you'll see a highlighted note about local designations. And as you know, the city of Victoria has not yet designated any or adopted any historic preservation rules. What we have adopted is a demolition delay. That's Section 5-5 of the City Code, Special Historical Buildings and Districts. So it calls for a 60-day demolition delay for historic properties from the date of the permit application. It applies to Recorded Texas Historic Landmark Properties, National Register designated properties. Any property within a historic district that was constructed prior to 1950, and then any property included in the Historic Resource Survey of Victoria, which is a survey that was completed in 1986 by Hadi Hekkamore. The procedures is the person applies, the owner applies for the demolition permit, and then from the date of that application, we place public notice on the city's website. If you go to the city's website, there's a public notices tab that has the different departments, and so you click on development services, and we will post different required public notices on that tab, including this demo delay, and then also poster on the property. So you can see example from the picture on the screen. We started using the fluorescent paper about two to three years ago to mimic the Building Standards Commission notices, so it's very clear when you see fluorescent on a building, it's going to be coming down. And then the code does allow for the director to waive the delay where such demolition is necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And I have taken the stance that I only will waive it if there are standing Building Standard Commission orders, because if the Building Standards Commission deems a property needing to come down within 30 days to protect the health, safety, and welfare, then we don't need to have that building come down in 30 days and not wait 60 days. So I will only waive those in the case that we have a standing Building Standards Commission order. The article also states, "This article is not intended to permanently prevent demolition, but rather to provide an opportunity to develop alternatives and preserve the historical significance of existing neighborhood character for historic properties." So that pretty much covers everything that you will find in Section 5-5, which is our demolition delay. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Julie, can you hit on, you heard Julie mention that our existing historic survey is from 1984, but I believe our county historic preservation office received a grant recently to update that? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes. So I don't know when that new survey is going to kick off. It will be much smaller scope. It will not be a citywide survey, because as with all plans, they're very expensive. But once the county historic commission became a certified local government, that opened them up to grant funds. And so they did apply through that CLG program to do an update of the survey, and I think the scope is really limited to just the downtown historic district. And so they will be able to completely review all of the properties in that limited area. Again, it won't be citywide, but it'll give a better assessment of what historic properties we have in the downtown area.
Julie, what is, in your opinion, the biggest factor, cause for demolition of these historic homes?
So a lot of historic preservation ordinance will have a phrase or a clause, demolition by neglect. And it's exactly how it sounds, is that if historic property is not lived in or not maintained, it basically falls apart. It becomes demolished through that neglect. And so I think that's what we see as being the biggest factor to losing historic structures, because the cost to maintain them is so great, and then people will abandon them, and they become demolished by neglect.
And later in the agenda, Julie will provide an update, too, on the development of our unified development code, or UDO, or ordinance. And so as part of that, there is a recommendation to have a more specific conversation on historic preservation. And so when she hits on that later on, we can, you know, continue that conversation if you wish. But it's definitely something that is a conversation that's ongoing.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Anybody else have an item from council? Nope? All right, we'll close citizens communication, or close items from council, and we'll go into citizens communication. This is for any citizen that wishes to address council and that is not on one of the items with public hearings. And we'll start with Daniel Canales.
Camacho.
Oh, Camacho, oh, sorry.
Hello, my name is Danny Camacho, as everyone knows me by. I'm the founder, president, and coach of the Victoria Bad News Chairs, which is an adaptive nonprofit sports organization, team here in town. We've been around for seven years now, and, you know, because of COVID, we kind of had, everybody had to kind of shut down a little bit. But this is our first year, we're bringing back our fifth annual wheelchair softball tournament, which is called the Crossroads Wheelchair Softball Classic, and it's held at the CADC field. I don't know if y'all are familiar with that, but it's a field that's adapted for wheelchair adaptive users. And so we're really blessed to have that here in Victoria and to be able to use that. And so I'm pretty much here to hopefully get support of the city to help with this event. It is July 4 weekend that we're putting it on this year, July 2 and 3. And, yeah, so we're really looking for support for the city, from the city, and, you know, we still got some costs that, to make this event possible, we still have some costs that need to be covered. So we're trying to get, you know, race funds. We're actually doing a raffle ticket sale also. I have some flyers I can leave here, you know, for people who wanted, interested in more information about, excuse me, about it. And also, I wanted to bring up, at the CADC field, I think it's privately owned and run. And I spoke with a representative of the CADC, Mr. Anthony Young, who runs Young Tile. And I want to say he told me that to turn the lights on, it's like $2,000 to turn those lights on. And that's something we know as an organization, we can't really afford that. So I was maybe thinking, hoping we can maybe get accommodated by the city or maybe even waived or something for about that cost to get those lights turned on. And the big reason for that is because, again, our tournament is in July, and it's super hot. In the past years that we hosted it, and we usually have like two to three people get heat exhaustion. So we're really trying to maybe cut out some of the, stop playing during the hottest part of the day, and then start continuing playing later in the evening, and hopefully take advantage of those lights, and so we can continue playing. And again, that cost to turn those lights on, I don't know, it's a pretty steep price, $2,000 just to have the lights turned on. But anyway, but that's one thing. And the last thing I would like to say is, as president of Victoria Bad News Chairs, I really want to start taking, I'm sorry, taking initiative as to help with the city and get, make, be an advocate for the disabled community here in town. And hopefully, you know, get things more accessible and what needs to be done here in town, and with the help with other organizations like the Emmy Foundation, Emmy Science Foundation. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho. Mr. James Weirden.
Good evening, mayor, members of city council. Can you give these to the council members? I've got enough. Got more. I got one for you. Were we missing one? Mayor, members of council, I brought these brochures this evening because they have historic Victoria, Texas on it, Old Victoria Driving Tour. We use these in attracting tourists to our city as well as educating our local residents about the importance of our history and our architectural history as well that goes along with that. Neighborhoods that are especially known for that are the area that's west of Moody toward Riverside Park. There's a collection of historic homes that is a great example of different architecture from different periods. So if you look at the brochure, I'm not going to look at every one on this brochure, but if we could open our brochure and just look at number 30 on that page. It's listed as "The John and Henry at a Little House, 502 Victoria. Built in 1896 for John and Henry at a little, this Victorian house is noteworthy for its ornamental detailing, sunburst brackets, and a radiating arched spindle section in their front gable, and unique." That was a National Register listing in 1986. Well, we're currently losing that house right now with no one really knowing what's going on, with questionable notice being posted, et cetera. When I talked to residents in the area, they thought the house was actually being repaired and not being taken away from our city. So something to think about going forward if we really think that the ordinance is working and we're losing a National Register structure like this. I think we need to rethink that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Weirden. All right, Mr. Von der Rohe.
Good evening, council, mayor, city secretary. My big issue is appraisals. The appraisals are allegedly just way too high for properties in Victoria. I've heard some appraisals, they have a $200,000 house dollar, now it's $400,000. I hear a $100,000 house going to $200,000. I have a ragged-out trailer house that was appraised at $4,000, and it went to $19,000. And I don't know why, maybe I put some carpet over that hole in the trailer house or some duct tape over some hose or something. There's no reason it should go from- There's no reason it should go from 4,000 to 19,000. I mean, it's the hood. You have alleged sex offenders, drug dealers, hoarders. You got several houses that's been demolished, not destroyed, demolished. And it just keeps getting worse and worse. One of my neighbors, a big old tree branch fell right through the roof and code enforcement is looking into it more and more. And the trailer park owner, he lives in Houston and he don't have time to come by. So code enforcement usually inspects it by twice a month and makes sure it's clean. And on trailer number 32, that's abandoned house. It's been abandoned for like a year. They did make it better because code enforcement cited it for substandard conditions and it don't have a door. And I, I think when you own a home and it's abandoned, it should have a door, you know, because you have squatters and alleged drug dealers and sketchy people come there. And also I'd like to thank the Crossroads Task Force, the Victoria Police Department, the Sheriff's Department for making a drug bust on Meyer. It was a very big bust. That's the street that bisects that William Offer school I've been complaining about. They did start demolishing it out last week and they're doing it today as, as we're speaking. So I appreciate the city attorney. That can be one of his bigger accomplishments other than dog issues. He got William Offer demolished and stuff. And the city manager and code enforcement and building standards and commission. Thanks and have a good evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, council? I just came here today to speak about a property at 602 South Wheeler that's slated for demolition. I own the properties adjacent to it, 602B and 604. It's, we spoke regarding this property with the buildings commissions a few weeks ago. At that time, it was determined that the building did meet the criteria for demolition. At the time, the two properties that we were fixing up next door, there, I witnessed numerous times that there was people, the house was abandoned. It's been abandoned, it's been falling apart. There's always squatters coming in and out. It's been a problem with what I believe is drug trafficking that's going on in and out of the house. There's been people, you know, living there, squatters, vagrants without any utilities present at the property. The, the, the property in question's been, like I said, it's been empty for a few years now. You see some movements every once in a while where they patch up something, they get permitted and it just hasn't, there's been no developments on the property as far as fixing up. And I just believe that it, I think it was appealed, but I believe that the property should be knocked down. I think there's been a big investment in the downtown area to beautify the area with investors and property owners there. And that property there in question is just one of the last, just really bad eyesores there in that, in that, in that area there. So that's all I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor and city council, I'm here representing my father and mother who own the house that Jaime was referring to adjacent, we're at 606 South Wheeler. And I concur what Jaime was saying. That house has been eyesore for many, many years. I kind of helped take care of the property at 606 South Wheeler. And really that property is, is nonlivable. And I can't imagine why this property should still be in existence. There's, I don't think there's even facilities that are functional. They've had multiple warnings since 2017, I think, to do repair, to make this a livable house. And it has not been accomplished. I guess as a business owner, when I try to do construction, the requirements, you know, are very steep. And yet we can have a house like this in a neighborhood that definitely doesn't meet minimal requirements. And I'm just giving affirmation that this needs to be demolished. I think there's been ample time for the house to been repaired and it has not been suitable for someone to live in. I get, I have a vacant lot next to my business on Main Street and grass gets up too tall and they send me a notice, notification to mow my grass on that vacant lot, which is just grass, it's not even ugly, it's just grass. And yet I get notifications to mow it, which I accordingly do and keep it up to standards, but I find it sometimes okay. I'm getting a notice about grass on a vacant lot. So just basically affirmation with Jaime had said that I think it needs to be demolished because I think it's had ample time to been repaired and it has not been for, since 2017. So I don't see what we're waiting on. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scher.
Good evening, council. I have moved into that property at 606 South Wheeler in February of 2017. It was damaged in Harvey. And there was a family living there and the home was never repaired. Their, the roof has collapsed in the back. They've tried to patch the back walls. I have been in communication with the building services and with filing forms through Grace Garcia's office, with Isaac, with Mr. Rick Madrid. I've been working on this since the summer of 2020, trying to get this house shut down, this property. The foot traffic that popped up when Jaime started doing construction, we were doing roof construction and the, the vehicle traffic just was a huge spike. And I was finally able to get the sheriff's department involved in March of 2021. And he is now lieutenant Bateman, is willing to speak and discuss with anyone his investigation of this property, what his surveillance has happened with this property, text messages, photographs of vehicles, you know, anything of the like. But, and now with this new development going in and we've had new families move in down the street, everyone's concerned. And I'm not aware if any of y'all saw the photographs from the building commissions meeting, but there was about, I don't know, 45 photographs of this structure. And there is no way that someone could be physically leaving, living in this structure, especially during the freeze when the windows were broken and they had blankets stuffed in the door. I mean, it, it, it needs to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council. I live at 606 South Wheeler. And just to reaffirm our concerns with the structure at 602 South Wheeler, all the activity we're seeing, you know, they're trying to do what Jaime said, the beautification of downtown. The Steve Klein is building the new houses there on Wheeler and trying to do some improvements to the neighborhood. And with that eyesore, it just is not appealing for any homeowner to come in and try to buy a home. And so just trying to better the neighborhood. Also, like you said, for the families that are moving in, there's the house right next to it has kids and it just is not safe, you know, with all the traffic, with the drug activity. And so just more affirmation that we believe that the structure at 602 should be demolished. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our citizens communications. Thank you all for coming forward and visiting with us. We're going to items with public hearings, item C1.
Item C1 is an ordinance amending chapter 21 of the city, of the Code of Ordinances by establishing a downtown entertainment district.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. What I have tonight is a brief presentation on a proposed entertainment district in downtown Victoria. So real quickly, I want to provide to you a definition and the benefits of having an entertainment district. As recommended by the downtown master plan, Victoria Main Street is proposing to establish this district and designate a central location to increase the number of and the patronage of shopping, restaurants and nightlife venues. A few benefits for having an established entertainment district. It boosts the local economy, promotes a vibrant and active downtown, provides locations for the community and tourists to socialize and be entertained and attracts new nightlife and entertainment enterprises. So diving in a little bit into what is in the written ordinance, there are some regulations, if you will, on use of sidewalks that help merchants that are within the downtown entertainment district. And those kind of are spelled out with the use of sidewalks during business hours, business owners may display merchandise, like if they wanted to have a sidewalk sale, if you will, they can put out sandwich boards, benches, tables, food service, et cetera. And there's also regulations such as where those items are placed so that it doesn't obstruct pedestrian traffic on the sidewalks. For sound amplification, when it comes to having nightlife entertainment, there is a regulation in there as far as how many decibels are allowed. And it, this is for restaurants, entertainment venues within the district holding an alcoholic beverage license. And it allows sound amplification equipment during periods of operation of the business during the days and times and of day that coincide with the alcoholic beverage permit use by the venue, provided that the sound is being produced in a manner that does not exceed 90 decibels at the point of sound mixing. It also provides some guidance on special event and public park use. A lot of these provisions, we already practiced today. It's just spelling it out in the ordinance as far as what is allowed or not allowed, such as street blocking closures. We have a process for that, granting temporary use of any parks, which of course would facilitate going through the rental process. Again, closing streets that occupy the streets, public parks during the periods of events, but not limited to the use of streets and parks for the sale and consumption of alcohol or beer and wine. And then it also mentions the rental and use agreements on behalf of the city as may reasonably necessary to support and encourage more special events. Alcohol possession and consumption, we have a guideline in there. It says, the possession and the consumption of beer and wine on public property within the district during the days and hours of a special event within the district is permitted. This section does not affect the prohibition against possessing an open container in a passenger area of a motor vehicle. So basically it's saying that you can have, you can't possess an alcoholic beverage within the district, but all the other laws apply when it comes to consuming alcohol. And so I wanted to briefly show you the, the map. I don't know if I can drive from this, but as you see in the blue, those are the blocks that we are proposing to be the designated entertainment district. I wanted to really just highlight, you know, this is the area that we see, oh, thank you, that we see a lot of the restaurants and shopping in currently. But we also included Delion Plaza, the Welder Center and the Hoss venue and Greeks 205. So I just wanted to highlight that. And also the orange is the proposed cultural district that I showed to you guys a few meetings back. So there is a few overlap, but this was recommended by the Main Street Board as the boundary for the entertainment district. Okay, I can just exit of this? All right. So that concludes my brief presentation. Are there any questions? I will, I will add shortly, this is the first reading. We will have second and third, of course. Staff is already preparing to do a education workshop, if you will, to help the businesses or those that want to host events in downtown in the entertainment district. It's sort of like, what are the guidelines? What are the processes and how to do it? And explain in more detail what the entertainment district is. So we are working on that currently.
Is there a possibility to expand later? And would that have to be changed in, you know, the readings for tonight?
I believe it can be expanded at a later date. It would have to come back to council.
The ordinance specifically says that the boundaries of the map are established by the map that is kept on file in the city secretary's office and can be changed by the city manager later by filing a new map.
Yes.
So I had a question about the section of the ordinance dealing with sound amplification. And I noticed in there that it was 90 decibels. And as I read it, could begin at 10 a.m. and go to midnight on most days or till 2 a.m. on Saturday and Sunday. My concern, and I went and looked at how loud is 90 decibels? I mean, I don't know where that number came from. I'm not audio, I just saw, I was like, okay, well, how loud is that? And looked at comparative examples, one of which is a power mower. Another one, 90 decibels is a motorcycle at 25 feet. And so I look at that from the standpoint of, let's say you have multiple businesses in the same block that are all playing music at 90 decibels at 1 o'clock in the afternoon or 2 o'clock in the afternoon. You know, there are offices, businesses, other areas downtown that that could have an impact on. Perhaps we should look at, and I guess my, my question would be, should we look at the 90 decibels, for one thing, and perhaps a stared phase in, if you will, during the day, maybe it's a certain level. And then nighttime entertainment is different. I just, I'm concerned about multiple sources of music at 90 decibels all throughout the day.
That's a very good point. We can definitely look at revisiting that and maybe coming back with a second reading of revision.
Danielle, the, on the beverage and possession in the district, can you take a beverage out of an establishment? Do you purchase it inside and just walk out with it?
Okay, as my understanding, it depends on what T A B C license the business actually holds. If they hold a mixed beverage license and it's on premise only, it cannot exit the building. If it's a beer and wine off premise license, it can exit the building. So it all boils down to which license the establishment holds. Would you like to add anything, Thomas?
I think you did a great job explaining that.
No, and I understood that, but I'm doing this for, for public consumption as well, no pun intended. Because I don't want people to think that this goes above T A B C's laws and the licensing that each establishment has to have. And that just needs to get out there that if, if they want that, then each establishment needs to be part of that as well. To have the proper license.
I will add one element to that. And I think for, for purpose of clarification, the city of Victoria does not have any regulations prohibiting people from taking drinks out of beverage establishments, out of drinking establishments. Those regulations that Danielle correctly summarized, those are all in state law, not in Victoria code.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Okay, thank you.
This time I'll open up item C1's public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this item, please come up to the microphone. Seeing no one get up, we'll close the public hearing and entertain any motions.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion to adopt in a second? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item C2.
Item C2 is an ordinance amending the schedule of rates for taxicab services. And April Hilbik, our city secretary, is going to spearhead this item.
Sorry about that, I had asked Thomas to read it. Okay, so the presentation I'm going to give you tonight, council, is on taxicab rates and an increase request that we received. So city code section 23-31 does state that the, it is unlawful for a taxicab company to charge rates in excess of the rates adopted by the city and on file in my office. So on this slide here, I know there's a lot of information there, but those are all the rate increases that have happened throughout the years, which is totals 15 times since 1947 when the city started regulating taxi- which totals 15 times since 1947, when the city started regulating taxicab rates. So Mr. Caesar Hernandez, owner of Caesar's Taxi, has asked for a rate increase. In 1947, the 30 cent fare was the start rate of the taxi. And a customer could be taken up to seven tenths of a mile before the rate increased based on mileage, whether the location was inside or outside of city limits, or an additional suitcases or wait time were incurred. Those all increased the charges. Since 2011, the rate of $2.50 for the initial pickup is the current rate. And it increases for every 12th of a mile that a customer goes. There are no additional charges for extra passengers, groceries, boxes, or suitcases. And the wait time rate is $7 per hour. So the request that Mr. Hernandez submitted has asked for a rate increase to $3 for the initial pickup and an increase of $0.05 per 12th of a mile to $0.25, or a total of $3 per mile, and an increase in the wait time to $0.50 or $28 an hour from the current rate of $7 per quarter hour. So we looked at the inflation rate since 2011, and I'll thank Wesley Yanishek for helping me with this portion. But we looked at the inflation rate since February of 2011, according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, and to March of this year, because that was the most recent rates when I did the presentation, which was 30%. So the rates of increase being requested by the three different items that Mr. Hernandez is requesting increased by 20%, 25%, and 7.14% to increase the standby wait time. So well within the inflation rate, or less than the inflation rate throughout the years. It's just a brief presentation. If you have any questions, Mr. Hernandez is also here and willing to speak during the public hearing if y'all have any questions of him.
Thank you, Ms. Hilbik, that's well done. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for item C2. Anybody wishing to speak on the item, please step forward. Seeing no one get up, we'll close the public hearing and entertain any motions.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion to approve in a second. Ms. Solis and Mr. De La Garza. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We got the consent agenda, and I forgot to mention at the top of the meeting that we were going to be pulling item D8 from this. It'll be on next time's agenda.
Okay. Item D1 is the adoption amendments of the regular medium April 19, 2022. Item D2 is an ordinance amending and readopting traffic regulation schedules as provided in various sections of the city code. This item is on second and third reading. Item D3 is to approve a variance to Section 21-83A6B for the property located at 714 East Rio Grande Street in order to allow the plating of a general commercial lot. Item D4 is a resolution appointing members to the Board of Health. Item D5 is a resolution approving an installation agreement with the vision equipment for the washer-compactor third generation at the regional wastewater treatment plant for their proposal amount of $104,500. And item D6 is a resolution awarding a competitive sealed proposal to Schrader Refrigeration Company Incorporated for the replacement of the HVAC chillers at the Victoria Community Center in the amount of $164,300. Item D7 is a resolution approving the donation of expired personal protective equipment to include structural firefighting coats, pants, and protective hoods, and transfer ownership of a 2008 Pierce fire apparatus to the Helping Hands Program of Texas A&amp;M Forest Service.
Thank you, Ms. Hilbik.
I'll move for approval of items D1 through 7 on the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, E1.
Item E1 is a resolution awarding the 2022 crack seal project to Forby Paving Incorporated of Spring Branch, Texas, for their competitive sealed proposal in the amount of $143,000.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm back. This is quick, brief, kind of an overview of what a crack seal project is and how important they are. It's, we specify this in pounds. You would think it'd be linear feet, but it's a lot of walking. So we average about, per pound of crack sealant material, we get about seven and a half feet of crack per pound. This project will get about 247,000 linear feet of cracks sealed. Project times, about 150 days. Contractor typically beats that when they get here. And this is a continuous effort to preserve the streets. Project map is on the left. Those are the streets we're really targeting this year. And one of the important keys to look is what we've done in the past with crack seals. Back in 2010, we had a large project of 525,000 that cracked sealed a lot of streets in Victoria. Since then, we kind of stopped. And we picked it back up in 2020, 2021, and this year, 2022. It's important that we keep this momentum going. I think we were on a good program. And one of the things that, why we crack seal. Open cracks in pavement allows moisture and base causing potholes and failures, preserves the pavement integrity. And part of that pavement lifecycle is crack sealing. You want to do it every year. It's one of those things that it's a good thing to do. Chip seal, seven to 10 years, and then we go into the mill and overlays 15 years. Least pavement maintenance program, it's least expensive pavement maintenance program. Again, good bang for the buck. It costs an average of $0.60 a foot. What is crack seal? Process involves traffic control, of course. You clean out the cracks, you heat the blocks, place the material in the crack, squeegee. And in deeper, wider cracks, you would put sand in to level the crack. You just don't want to pour the stuff in the crack and let it go forever. Hot-mix streets, those are the ones we attack. Those are more brittle than a seal coat street. Seal coats already got the oil on it. They're a lot more flexible. This is some pictures of a crew. It is a very intensive labor part program to do. It takes a lot of people, traffic control, and a lot of equipment. Up close picture, and then you see the wide cracks. And I'm sure you've seen those. You can see them on, some on Red River and some on Ben Jordan. And project timeline, start in May to execute the contract, mobilize in July, and then we're expecting to complete September. And I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just going to reiterate, this is very important to our upgraded maintenance programs on our roads. And it's imperative, I think, that we continue it. Everybody have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt.
I second it.
All right, motion in a second to approve item E1. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, E2.
Item E2 is a resolution awarding a competitive seal proposal with LSPS Solutions LLC for electronic operations and maintenance manuals in the amount of $233,528.
Okay, this one, we did a request for proposal that was developed for the services. And we advertised back in February of 2022. And we received one proposal for this project. If you'll note, we had, in the proposal, we had three items. We had a regional plant, the Odom wastewater plant, and then the additional items in the surface water plant. We elected to take out the regional plant because, as you heard last council meeting, we're going into the evaluation of that. So we figured it'd be best to pull back, use some of that money to continue with the operate, to do the evaluation of the plant. I've got the representative here with LSPS. He's going to kind of go over what this involves, how it pertains to our individual city. And I'll turn it over to Lynch Horton.
Thank you, Ken. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It is nice to be before you again this evening. And I thank you for the opportunity allowing me to do that. I want to talk to you real quick about what an electronic O&amp;M manual is and why it's such a great asset management tool. Show you an example of one, and then I'll talk about the scope of services that's included in this resolution that's before you tonight. If I can get my mouse to work. There we go. So electronic O&amp;M manuals are just one of the asset management tools that we use to develop a very comprehensive asset management system for cities and public sector clients. It is one of the most important, in my opinion, asset management tools that we have because it really provides the backbone for all the other tools. It basically inventories all your equipment and tells you exactly which equipment you have, where it's located, and provides all the information associated with each piece of equipment and makes it available, puts it in one spot, and makes it available to all your employees all the time, regardless of where they're at. So when most of us think about O&amp;M manuals, we think about these big binders. We get them whenever we build a new plant or pump station. The engineer in his specifications puts a requirement in there that the contractor provide O&amp;M manuals to us. TCQ rules require that we have O&amp;M manuals for our water and wastewater treatment facilities. They are basically a compilation of manufacturer's brochures for all the pieces of equipment that you've purchased when you built that plant. They're real nice. We get them, and we look at them, and we put them on a shelf, and that's where they sit, and we never touch them again. And the reason is, although they have a lot of great information in them, as they are, they're really not that great a tools for us because they don't contain all the information that we need. For instance, we can't link websites in a book like that. We can't, it may have some photos, but there can stop photos. They're not photos of the equipment that you purchased, installed in the setting in which you have them. There are no narratives in there that explain how that piece of equipment works in your system with the other components in your system to accomplish the task that you need to have accomplished. And there's certainly no construction plans or as-built drawings in them. Those are typically a separate set of documents that are kept elsewhere. Because they're just a random compilation of documents, they also are not easy to navigate, sometime difficult to understand, and certainly not readily available to all our employees all the time, especially when you're a technician out in the field trying to work on a piece of equipment. You know, those things are back at the surface water plant office or up in engineering at 700 Main. They're just not available to everybody. And because they're rarely used, they're never updated. We change pumps, we do things, and we don't update them. There is a better way, and that better way is through electronic O&amp;M manuals. And so I want to show you what an electronic O&amp;M manual is by showing you one that we built for Brazosport Water Authority in Lake Jackson. And how did I get this drug over here? I did click on it. It's moving here. Okay, thank you, Jane. So Lake Jackson, Brazosport Water Authority is a political subdivision in Lake Jackson, provides treated water to about eight different cities, two prison units, and Dow Chemical. They had us build this Austintown Pump Station E&amp;M manual for them. And I like to use it to show people what E&amp;M manuals are because it's a very small, concise one, but it's also very complete. And so when you open it up, you can see here a picture of the pump station, a short narrative about the pump station. And then there's navigation buttons here along both sides that you can use to drill down into if you want to find out about the pumps. You can see here, we have a short narrative about the pumps. Over here, we have a table that tells us there are two ghouls, vertical turbine pumps there, each designed with a specific gravity of three, I mean, specific capacity of 3,960 gallons per minute. We have links to construction plans, and so they're right there available. You can print these, email these. What to expect during startup, how to start up, what to expect during normal operations. We have troubleshooting, maintenance recommendations from the manufacturer. And then down here on the bottom, we put all of the manufacturer's brochures that would be included in that binder. But here, they're easy to navigate and get to. So if you're looking, you're trying to troubleshoot a pump, boom, there's the troubleshooting guide. And so relatively easy to navigate, thoroughly configurable, and we could drill down into all these chemicals, chemical systems. I'm not going to go through all that with you. But the idea is, it puts everything about all the equipment at that pump station in one location, easy to get to, and can be accessed by anyone that has security clearance to access it on your network. So this looks like a webpage, acts like a webpage, but it's never posted to the internet. It resides on your network and is accessible by anyone that has access, security clearance to access your network. I'm running it off a hard drive tonight. So like for Brazosport, their field technicians have it on a hard drive. They run it on their laptops out in the field. So that's what they look like and what they act like. I want to talk about yours here in Victoria. And we're probably going to have to drag that over again, aren't we? No, I got it. Uh-oh. Okay, so this, the problem is, the displays must be magnified on this. So you have one here in Victoria for your surface water plant. This one was designed and built by CDM, the engineer on that project, back in 2001, when the plant came online. It was built using, however, navigation system that is no longer supported. And it was built using some third-party software that is no longer available. And so somewhere between now and then, between 2020 and 2001, this program quit working. And so in 2020, the city hired my firm to come in and reprogram it to get it working again. So we reprogrammed all the navigation, and we used this navigation scheme that you show here. And I apologize for the way it looks. It's because they've got magnification on this display. But also, the other thing we did was, we took and converted all the drawings in here to PDF, from DGN and DWG to PDFs, so that they could be open using Adobe Acrobat Reader, a freeware, so that you didn't have to have expensive third-party software that is no longer supported. So we built that. At the same time, though, we we built a portal for you that includes that so that over time, you could expand it if you wanted to. You could have electronic O&amp;M manuals for your other facilities. And so the original, the original E&amp;M manual that I showed you a minute ago included the surface water plant, your raw water pump station, which is over at Tibbely and Lower Mission Valley Road, and your river pump station, which is on River Road. It did not include Plant 3. It did not include your new tire five pump station, nor did it include any of your wells. The original one also did not include any of your wastewater facilities. We went ahead and set it up so that you could build one for your regional plant, build one for your Odom Street wastewater plant, and all your lift stations. And if you'll see, there are currently two lift stations also that you have E&amp;Ms for currently. One is the Highway 77 North Lift Station, very small lift station way out on the far north end of Navarro Street. My firm built that one for the city and basically gave it to the city free just to show that we could do this work and what a benefit it would be. And then in 2020, the city actually hired us to build the one for the Odom Street Wastewater Treatment Plant, Influent Lifts. Influent Lift Station, which is on Bottom Street. So, the scope of work for this resolution project that you have before you this evening is, number one, the information in here on your surface water plant is the original information when the plant was brought online in 2001. It's hard for me to believe. That's been over 20 years, but it has. And in those 20 years, there's been a lot of changes made. Chlorine dioxide was not used when we first started up that plant. We added it later. We used anhydrous ammonia when we started out the plant. Now, we're using liquid ammonium sulfate. The quaglin's changed. We've changed pumps. We've replaced flock drives. We've changed injection points on chemicals. None of that's ever been updated. So, one of the things, one of the items in this scope of work is to go in and update that surface water plant, your existing EOM manual, to include all the changes that have occurred in that plant since it was built in 2001. Secondly, we want, included is add the plant number three at Airline and Ben Jordan, the new Tower 5 pump station that you added a few years ago, and all of your wells, including your ASR well. And then finally, the, the last component is to include a EOM manual for your Odom Street Wastewater Plant. And that's all I have to say. Unless y'all have questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
No? Thank you, Mr. Short. It's good to see you again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything you want to add, Ken?
No. I just want to say it's a very good opportunity to get the plant operations in all in one place. We have used it. I have it on my computer as a portal, and I know our operators would be very happy to have this for their use.
Mr. Gill, do you think this firm has enough knowledge to be able to adequately prepare these manuals for us?
Yes, I do. Absolutely.
For those that are watching, Mr. Short used to be our director of that department, so he's very well aware of what we have here and appreciate him providing this proposal to us.
Yes. Thank you.
Move to approve item E2. A second.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries E3.
Thank you.
Item E3 is a resolution hearing and appeal of the Building and Standards Commission's Order of Demolition for 602 South Wheeler Street.
Good evening. So, on April 14, the Building Standards Commission issued an order of demolition based on several findings at 602 South Wheeler Street, which is the structure or any part thereof is constructed or maintained in violation of any provision of the city's building code or other ordinances. The non-supporting covering of walls, ceilings, roofs, or floors are 50% or more damaged or deteriorated. The structure or any part thereof has been damaged to the extent that it has become dangerous to the public health, safety, and welfare. And the structure or any part thereof has inadequate means of egress as required by the city's building code. As you heard during citizens' communication, there's been activity that's kind of started on and off by the property owner to repair this. The property owner originally pulled a permit to repair in June of 2020 that expired due to non-activity, and then recently pulled a permit in January. But despite that permit being issued or pulled by the property owner, the, the lack of work still convinced the Building Standards Commission to issue the orders recently to demolish the structure. Since 2006, this property has had 18 code enforcement violations. And for that reason, staff recommends that you uphold the Building Standards Commission orders to demolish it. So, you can see from the photographs that the property is in a seriously dilapidated state. And it's missing windows. And the back roof is completely missing with exposed rafters, which has, of course, caused further deterioration by being exposed to the weather and elements. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I noticed that, as I understand it, the existing permit is in effect until July, and you say that was pulled in January?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What work has been done since January?
I couldn't give you a, a complete list because it seems like every time we go out there, the property is in even a more dilapidated state. So, even if there is some minor work that's being done, being exposed to elements or having vagrants just continues to, to make it worse.
Thank you.
All right. There's no questions. Mr. Gush, may I ask you, what are our actions for this item?
The resolution has been written to uphold the recommendation of staff, which is to uphold the recommendation of the Building and Standards Commission and to deny the appeal. So, if you pass the resolution as it's been presented to you, you will be denying the appeal and upholding the prior decision of the Building and Standards Commission.
Thank you for that clarification.
I'll move we adopt E3.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Great. Thank you, Ms. Fulgham. F1, your turn.
So, I get to finish out tonight with a, a update.
All right. So, to be in City Manager's Report, I'll intro it real quick. We are, I was going to say obviously, but for those people tuning in, we did hold a joint Planning Commission and City Council Workshop this past Friday where the initial diagnostic report for the UDO was presented. Tonight is a summary of the report as well as an update on the process. And to help spearhead that conversation, Julie Fulgham, our planning director, will take it from here.
So, again, it's a update of our unified development ordinance. To start off, I'd like to kind of reiterate who is the team working on our unified development ordinance. We do have a steering committee that's comprised of three council members and three members of our planning commission. And then, of course, multiple staff members from the Development Services Department and Public Works Department. Our consultant is Freeze Nichols. And then, of course, we will be continuing to reach out to stakeholders throughout the entire process. So, we're about four months into the development of UDO. You can see with the arrow, we have just completed the diagnostic report. And that diagnostic report, of course, tells us where we've been so that we can have a good understanding of where we've been, so we'll know where we need to go. So, the diagnostic overview, as I said, just kind of tells us where we've been. It, it gives us an overview of our existing codes, and the goals are to provide coordination between the different regulations and standards, create a more user-friendly format moving forward, simplify our development process, and then ensure that we have a legally sound document. It also references and building upon our previous planning efforts. So, the comprehensive plan, and then, of course, most recently, the downtown plan. But we also have a parks master plan and a thoroughfare master plan that will also be referenced. All those planning documents will be referenced moving forward. And so, there, you will see in the diagnostic report different elements taken out of these plans that we need to look forward to as we craft and draft our new code. So, in developing the diagnostic report, of course, they reviewed all of our old ordinances, our existing ordinances, reviewed these plans, and then also spoke to the stakeholders. So, these were the major themes that was presented in the diagnostic report. And that is, a few to highlight is that currently, our development process is relatively easy. We need to fix and memorialize common variances in code. We need to take a major look at redevelopment to make sure that that process is a little bit smoother, encourage a variety of housing types, encourage cross-access, streamline some of our plat processes, reward, incentivize and codify different desired development types, and then definitely update our signage regulations to make sure that they're in compliance with recent case laws, and encourage mixed-use developments. So, where are we going now? We do have a website, victoriayudo.com. On the website, you will find the diagnostic report, learn about the project. It also has our online survey and an interactive map. The online survey is primarily for people that have used development services in the past, pulled different permits, gone through the development process, but anybody can take it. And the interactive map is more for your general citizen that will be used. The interactive map is intended for people to leave comments on different parts of town in Victoria. So, if you like a neighborhood and you say this neighborhood has a lot of, you know, trees or wide sidewalks or wide streets, you would make a comment that, why you desire that neighborhood. And then on the flip side, if there's other areas of Victoria that you don't really like those desired development patterns, you can leave those comments as well, as well. And so, those comments will take, and we'll try and create codes based off what Victorians like. And then, of course, our documents are all going to be uploaded to the project website. So, again, all the documents are in the document section, and the diagnostic report is available and ready to be downloaded. And so, right now, our next steps is we're going to review the diagnostic report feedback that we've received, the, collect the survey and map comments, and that will run through May 29. And then, we will begin drafting this, the new UDO, which will start with the outline, which will be, you know, the path forward as we adopt the new code. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No, thank you. It's a very robust process. I'm glad we're finally getting, to get it done and taken care of, and hopefully, it'll answer some of our needs as it relates to development, historical structures, sidewalks, everything. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garza. You have anything further?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, City Council will recess for 10 minutes and reconvene in executive session at 6:32.